Yeah, wait.
Do you want to say anything about Joe? No, Kim's gonna talk. You wanna talk after her?
No, for that.
You'll do your present.
No, not Joe.
Oh.
Joe Soletti. Okay, after Kim will talk and then you'll talk after. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna call the regular meeting for this City of Ashtabula Council to order. Tonight is Monday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's election eve, so we will keep that in mind. At this time, if you would please stand for a prayer and then if you would please for the pledge and then stay standing for a moment of silence also.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today, and your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing, please.
We're going to have a moment of silence for Officer Joe Soletti, who was a member of the Ashtabula City Police Department for many years. He was also a member of the Ashtabula County Sheriff's Department and a resource officer for the Ashtabula Area City Schools. My memories of Officer Soletti is that he was always joking, smiling, and just a joy to work with. He had a true dedication to the City of Ashtabula and his fellow officers. I asked Joe's daughter Kaylee what the family would like me to express about their father, and she stated the following. My dad loved his family. He loved being together, cooking food, and sharing many laughs. He was a jokester, that's for sure. He was dedicated to serving the community and fulfilled his lifelong dream of owning part of Piero's Pasta House. Thank you, Kaylee, for those memories. As a quote from Bob Marley states, "The greatness of a man is not how much wealth he acquires, but in his integrity and his ability to affect those around him positively." Joe Soletti truly emulates that quote. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family. Rest in peace, Joe. You will be truly missed.
Chief, would you like to add anything?
Well, there's so much you can say about Joe. I worked with him for twenty-five or so years. Over the time he rose to the rank of sergeant and lieutenant, he was in charge of the Detective Bureau for many years. As a police officer, he was fantastic to work with, very knowledgeable guy, and probably the best interviewer that I've ever seen. The guy could get a confession out of anybody. It was amazing how he could sweet-talk people. But funny guy, good friend of mine, too. He'll be sorely missed, and you know, it's heartbreaking what happened, but you know, he left a fond memory on all of us, and it was a real honor to work with him.
Thank you. Ms. Bell, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Roskovich?
Here.
Mr. Simeone?
Here.
Mrs. Foglio?
Here.
Mr. Guerrero?
Here.
Ms. Holman?
Present.
Mrs. Mills?
Here.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Present.
Mrs. Augustine?
Here.
Mr. Timonier?
Here.
You're all present this evening, so we are meeting the requirements of the Sunshine Law. We have a motion to convene an executive session at the conclusion of our meeting tonight to discuss a personnel item. When we return to council, no action will be taken. Will you please call the roll on the executive session, please?
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovich?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
So at the end of our meeting, we will convene an executive session by a seven to zero vote. We will now have some approval of our minutes.
October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, regular council meeting was called to order at seven o'clock PM by Council President Roskovich. Ward One Counselor Kim Foglio offered the opening prayer, and the Pledge of Allegiance was recited. Present, Mr. Roskovich, Mr. Simeone, Mr. Guerrero, Ms. Holman, Mrs. Mills, Mrs. De Giacomo, Mrs. Foglio. Officers present, Mr. Timonier, Ms. Cooper, Ms. Augustine, and Clerk of Council Bell.
May I have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes in their entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. De Giacomo moves, and Mrs. Foglio seconds.
Mrs. Holman, Ms. Holman.
Ms. Holman? I'm sorry. I have a clock. Ms. Holman moved. I apologize. Ms. Foglio, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes will be approved by a seven to zero vote. We will now go on to our administrative reports. From the city council desk, we have only to report that we have received the resignation of our clerk, Ms. Bell, who will be leaving us in the beginning of December. And so we will begin a search for a new clerk of council. And so there are means to apply. You could send an application to the city. What's the Monster? Excuse me, I don't know all this new stuff. Monster, and that's a computer thing, right?
Yep.
Okay, and...
Ohio means jobs on Lake Avenue also.
Ohio means jobs on Lake Avenue, and then it's on the city website. So if anyone's interested in the clerk's position with the city, you'd go to one of those vehicles and apply for the clerk's position.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Previously, didn't we list on the Ohio Municipal Clerk's job site or something like that before?
We did. We did that, yes.
So is that something we would consider again?
Yes. Yes, we could do that. Ashley, would you have access to that website, the Clerks Association website?
I do not.
No? Okay, we'll have to...
I think it's just simply sending them an email with the information.
Job description?
Yeah. Yeah.
We might need to update our previous... Whatever we made.
Okay, thank you. So that is out there. I don't have anything else from the council's point of view. So we will go to the city manager's request.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Ohio CAT of Minneapolis, Minnesota, for the purpose of purchasing two pumps for the Water Pollution Control Department through Sourcewell under their contract in the amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Funding for this purchase will be taken from Fund 504.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Rocky Road Paving for various street cut restorations under the Round Four Road Restorations in the amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund 412.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Mrs. Foglio moves. Ms. Holman, seconds? Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, you know what? I was just looking, because we have Round Four and Round Five, that we have Fund 412 and 503. Which ones? What are those again?
So 412, the funds are taken out of PI Fund 412 when they're storm sewers.
Okay.
When they're sewer, when they're sanitary sewers, it comes out of the Water Pollution Control, which is 503.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like another ordinance to enter into an agreement with Rocky Road Paving of Geneva, Ohio, for various street cut restorations under the Round Five Restoration in the amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund 503.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Mrs. Foglio moves.
Second.
Second was Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to execute change order number two with Roniak Paving of Burton, Ohio, for the two thousand and twenty-four paving project decreasing the contract price by one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixteen cents for a new contract price of one million, forty-six thousand, thirty-three, three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-four cents.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mr. Roskovich. Any discussion?
Director Manager?
Yes.
So does that, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, does that, will that rule for...
Yes. So right, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. President, Ms. Mills, yes. That just stays into the paving levy fund, and that rolls into next year. So right now, I think we're anticipating about a five hundred thousand dollar carryover, and then we usually, again, we use second half collection with first half collection next year to put together our program for the following year.
Okay, thank you. That was my question as well.
Seeing no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the agreement for wastewater conveyance treatment and disposal with Ashtabula County.
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio?
Second.
Second by Mr. Simeone. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
These next two items will be on your agenda probably for the next meeting, but first, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Development in Columbus, Ohio, for the purpose of administering the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund for the City of Ashtabula.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda next week, and go ahead.
And lastly, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with GPD Group of Youngstown, Ohio, for the purpose of providing engineering, design, and construction administration for the Walnut Boulevard storm sewer outfall in the amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund 412.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Mrs. Foglio moves. Mr. Roskovich will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So this is just for the design? So is there any kind of timeline for when this is?
Not really. I mean, we're probably, it's November now. We might have preliminary, because I'll have to do some surveying and a whole bunch of stuff in the backyards over there, and then put together actually what we believe will make the repair, see what those costs are, make sure we have the funds to actually make the repair. And then we're probably looking at construction next year.
So about how many homes is this?
It doesn't affect, basically, we found what we believe is an abandoned line, but there is some, something flowing through it. It doesn't show up on any of our maps. We think this is a leftover from annexation from Sabre Township, but it is causing a small sinkhole in a backyard. So we want to figure out what this is, where it connects to, who's connected to it, and get it addressed.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not like it's causing flooding or anything in the areas. We just noticed it because the sinkhole started to develop.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
That's all I have for ordinance requests. Just a couple announcements. First off, we ask that residents, as your, the leaves are blowing everywhere, to please not contribute to those and blow your leaves from your property into the roadway. We have noticed a couple homes that are doing that. We are doing curbside pickup through most of November here. We are in the Harbor area this week, and of course, I'm sure with the wind. I know I did mine yesterday, and the wind blew a whole bunch back in the yard, so it doesn't look like I did anything, but the battle we face every year. But also know that you are still able to drop bags off at the Public Works on West Twenty-Fourth Street. We ask that you make sure that they're bagged, and if you are bringing limbs, they're in three-foot sections in smaller bundles. You can't just drop limbs off out there. If you do have limbs for some reason on your property, give us a call. We'll arrange pickup of those. There might be a fee, depending on how many you have, but it's easier for us to come out there than to load and unload at the, at the Public Works. Remember, that service is for city residents only, and it's only for yard waste material. We ask that that's not abused. Lastly, Mr. President, as I mentioned at our last meeting, I don't think that we do a good job of publicizing enough what our police department is doing with regards to those that are homeless, unhoused, or causing some issues in the community. So what I did tonight is I asked our police chief to put together a presentation for you. We've also asked some of our officers to join us tonight to kind of give you guys a rundown of everything that we've been encountering, everything that we have, are doing, and everything that we will continue to do to kind of get over the stigma that we don't do anything when it comes to crime and when it comes to the homeless issue and those that are unhoused or have other issues that they're dealing with. I asked that, I do have a report that I'm gonna pass around as well, that the police chief put together. Some of these stats should surprise you, but also make you pretty proud of what our police department is doing. So I will turn this over to Chief as I pass these around.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I know we've had a lot of discussions of late about our homeless issue. I'm gonna use the term homeless. I know that it's not always the case, but talking about the people that are creating issues for us in the main avenue, in the parks primarily. The report is nine pages long. I don't expect everybody to read it tonight, but much of what we're gonna discuss tonight is going to be in the report, so there'll be some redundancy. I've invited or asked Lieutenant Plankus. He's in charge of our Narcotics Task Force, in charge of our Detective Bureau, to speak, as well as Officers White and Bruckman, who have been part of an initiative, an outreach program for the homeless. And then also Patrolman D'Angelo, who's been doing the summertime controls in the main avenue area as well, doing some community policing type things. So we've been approaching this issue from different angles. Before I turn it over to Lieutenant Plankus, so just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. For starters, our jail. Part of our, part of our problem with making a lot of physical arrests is just the fact we just don't have the jail space. It's not a lack of desire or anything of that nature. Even with all the available jail space, it would be tough to just keep arresting people on these things with all the other things we're dealing with in the city. But that said, we presently have seven people in our jail that are actually county, Ashtabula County jail inmates that are stuck in our jail because we can't get them out. That's seven out of nine, we have nine cells. We've got three holding cells that are not actual cells for around-the-clock usage. They're for, you know, people that are intoxicated and things like that. But our actual jail cells, yeah, we've got, we've got two available jail cells right now as we speak because we've got seven county inmates. Makes it difficult to, you know, to make those arrests for things that are often times misdemeanors. Yeah, they're nuisance, and they really aggravate everybody, but it's tough to take up a jail space for something like that. So we're limited on that. Couple of things, too, that were mentioned. A number of times, I heard the statement made, well, we called the police, and they said there's nothing they could do. And it's kind of more of a broad, general statement. It's kind of hard to track something like that down, but there were a few specific examples given during the course of some of the discussions. So I looked into those things. And I listened to recordings from our dispatchers. I looked at body cam video. Not one time did I see or hear an officer or dispatcher say, "There's nothing we can do." And I'm not saying that that has never happened. I can't. I can't say for certain that nobody has ever made that statement. I was unable to find any evidence of that being said by anybody on my staff. And lastly, there was a specific incident mentioned about a gentleman, gentleman, an individual who's causing some problems down in front of Ultimate Appearance a couple weeks ago. Yelling and screaming, and the staff went outside, and he did some disgusting thing out there. And the statement, I guess, was, was made that, well, they called the police, and we came, didn't really do much of anything. I just wanted to let everybody know that we actually found that guy a short time later, arrested him, and put him in jail. So that matter was addressed. We didn't necessarily find him down where he started all this, because he was on foot, he was mobile, but we did locate him, so. Now, with that, I'd like to just turn it over to Lieutenant Plankus. We'll go from there.
Good evening. Thank you. What we've prepared, and you've seen your packets, is quite a few stats. The statistics been put forth, I guess, to give you an understanding of the struggles that our community is experiencing and what our department does in response to that. Let's start first generically with our calls for service. So every time a call comes in through dispatch, an officer is dispatched, it becomes what's called a CAD, Simply Call for Service. Last year, two thousand and twenty-three, our department responded to fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two calls for service in the City of Ashtabula. With that, became almost thirty-four hundred reports, including two hundred and fifty-five crash reports. In two thousand and twenty-four to current effective November first, we are at fourteen thousand calls for service at this time. So you can see, if you project it out, we're gonna go well exceed our activity from last year. We currently set at over twenty-seven hundred incident reports, and we're already exceeded last year's crash reports of two sixty-two. So that's just overall department. As far as the Bureau, in which I work and oversee, we, our Bureau consists of five investigators right now. One of our investigators has pretty tough work, handles most of our sexual offenses, and you're gonna hear the numbers of our sexual assault cases that we take in every year. We have another one that assists with that part-time as other call volume, case value, volume allows. Within our Bureau and within our department, we also have the Ashtabula Police Department Narcotics Investigative Unit. We call it the APD NIU. That's a mixture of our patrol officers along with our investigators. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, back when we were part of CISA County Task Force, we were part of the FBI Safe Streets Task Force. When we left then and went out on our own, we lost that sponsorship or those positions with the FBI. And two thousand and twenty-one, they came back to us and requested for us to participate again, and we have been doing that since. Currently, we have two full-time task force officers assigned to that that operates within our, still within our department, so handles our call volume plus does the actual federal investigations on top of that, and we have five additional part-time that are there. The FBI Safe Streets Task Force is primarily used to investigate gang-related crimes, which include drug trafficking and firearm-related crimes. Talk about our Bureau or our task force cases and see how much has increased over the years. In two thousand and twenty-one, the Bureau itself handled one hundred and thirty-seven cases and twenty-two, one hundred and thirty-eight. Last year, two hundred and twenty cases, and this year to date, we're at one hundred and seventy-three. Went back in just generic stats for twenty-one. We had federal drug, thirteen federal drug cases and twenty-two state drug cases. In two thousand and twenty-two, of those one hundred and thirty-eight cases, we had six federal drug cases, twenty-two state drug cases, and a total drug seizure cases of one hundred and thirty-five between the department and the task force. The numbers, when we talk about quantities of narcotics that we're seeing in this community, and this segues into this issue that we're seeing with the homeless community, and that's why we're bringing this up now, so be patient with me. In two thousand and twenty-two, we seized over eighteen hundred grams of methamphetamine, five hundred and fifty-five grams of fentanyl, twenty-seven hundred grams of marijuana, sixty-three grams of cocaine, fifty-eight grams of crack cocaine, three hundred and seventy-four fentanyl pills, thirty-two firearms, and eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars in currency. Two thousand and twenty-three, we handled two hundred and twenty total cases, and this doesn't include our assistive patrol units, too. Of those two hundred and twenty cases, thirty-nine were sexual offenses. Forty-seven were state drug cases. Six were federal drug cases. Four were shootings. Thirty-nine were theft or property offenses, including B and Es and burglaries. We have fifteen fatal overdose investigations. During that time, we had three homicides. Those three homicides occurred, I think, in the span of less than two months. Our department handled those, and our guys did an excellent job, including our patrol division. Seizure numbers from twenty-three. Methamphetamine nineteen hundred grams, fentanyl fifteen hundred grams, marijuana fourteen hundred grams, cocaine seventeen hundred grams, crack cocaine twenty-one, fentanyl pills twenty-six. We had thirteen firearm seizures, and we seized about twenty-six thousand dollars in currency. Two thousand and twenty-four, our one hundred and seventy-three cases to date, thirty-five were sexual offenses. A little note for those, sexual offenses or showstoppers, those are very time-consuming cases. They're time-sensitive, so our guys do a good job of responding to those and collaborating with the various signature health and other providers that we have. We have twenty-five state drug cases, five federal cases, drug cases. So far to date, our department has investigated seventeen shootings in the City of Ashtabula this year. Seventeen people. Thirty-eight thefts, twenty-eight assaults, five fatal overdoses. We've had two homicide investigations this year. Our seizures to date, methamphetamine sixteen hundred grams, fentanyl seventy-eight grams, marijuana seven thousand grams, cocaine nine hundred grams, crack cocaine thirty grams. To date, we've seized a hundred and five firearms within the department, our task force, and we have seized over a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in drug-related funds this year, which is a record for our city. We're gonna talk a little bit about the methamphetamine and what it's doing to our homeless community. It's definitely an issue within the community as a whole, but we'll talk about percentages. Of a hundred and five drug seizures or cases in two thousand and twenty-four, a total of seventy-six of those include methamphetamine or involve methamphetamine. That's sixty-three percent of all of our drug seizures are methamphetamine-related. It's the most prominent drug within our community, and as I said, it's the most prominent or it is the most prominent drug used by our homeless community. And it's single-handedly spurred a lot of what we are seeing on the streets. Another issue that our guys deal with is the mental health crisis that we're seeing. If you're not familiar with it, mental health and substance abuse go hand in hand. Where you have one, you usually have the other. Which one comes first, I'm really not sure. That's not my expertise. Another issue that we're seeing within our community is what's called methamphetamine psychosis. If you haven't read up on that, there's plenty of articles online that are very exceptional to read and educational. We do see that within our homeless community, and we see that within other people that we're dealing with that are habitual users of methamphetamine. A lot of what you've seen, and we've heard examples of how some of the homeless community act, the paranoia, the hallucinations and things like that. We do know that, but it's very, it's almost impossible for us to diagnose whether we're seeing something that's methamphetamine-related or whether this is a mental health diagnosis that's not being treated or has not yet been treated. So what we're just trying to explain is those are statistics that our department are seeing, which is in a whole what our community is seeing. If anybody has any questions on those, I'll answer what I can.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So what I hear you saying is because of meth, we are having more homeless people? I guess, I guess the question I have that I'm trying to get to the bottom of, it seems to me that our homeless community is growing. So why is that?
When we do our outreach, and I will say, yes, methamphetamine is a significant contributor to what we're seeing with the homeless community. When you're seeing a high, and I would say better than eighty percent of our homeless community is using meth on a daily basis. So what came first? first, I don't know. But when we ask them, what brought you here? Why are you here? Why are you on Main Avenue? Why are you in our parks? They tell you almost all the same thing. No matter what the reason that brought them here to start with, they're here because they can get three squares a day, they can travel two to three square blocks to get it. The other needs that they have are met. We have other charitable organizations there that are providing the things that they need. And our mental health system is struggling and struggled for years. Our substance abuse, we know, just with the homeless community, we're not going to arrest our way out of any of this, okay? You don't have a big enough jail in Ohio to do it. It's a multi-pronged approach, all right? Substance abuse, we need counseling, we need education, and then, of course, you still need the enforcement aspect. So to say that, once they get here, they're very comfortable once they are here. And we've gone out of our way, as you'll hear from these guys, who've done an excellent job to try to get some of them the help that they need. Some of them don't want it. Some of them do accept it and take it, but a lot of them do not.
Thank you.
How do they, how do they get the money to buy drugs every day?
This isn't just the homeless community. That's why you see such an uptick in a lot of our other crimes, okay? We have an issue with prostitution, we have an issue with thefts, property crimes, and a lot of those are happening just outside the city, at your Lowe's, your Home Depots and things like that. So yeah, you're right. A gram of methamphetamine costs about $40 on the street. It's relatively cheap when you're talking about drugs, and your severe addicts are using probably two, three, four grams a day. So where does that money come from?
Can I ask you, and, and, you know, and thank you, everybody, for all, all officers for what you do. This, looking at these stats and chief this report, I mean, it's eye-opening. The firearms and the increase of shootings, I've no, I cannot believe these numbers. So are you seeing any of these?
We'll touch on the shootings that we've seen this year. We've seen a significant amount of these with young offenders. We've charged a lot of juveniles and kids that are probably in their late teens, early twenties with these shootings. I can't say they're all drug-related. Some of this is just impulsive, and it puts our people at risk. I mean, this past Sunday, we had a shooting on West Avenue, where 40 rounds were fired off on a busy, you know, on a busy roadway, and a vehicle that wasn't intended to be struck was struck multiple times. So that's another area of concern, but I can't say that's necessarily drug-related.
I have another question. So for a business owner, or maybe even someone in a neighborhood where there are encampments, and what is it you suggest that they do?
Just an encampment itself is not going to be illegal. If there's criminal activity going on, you can contact our department. We have a tip line which is monitored and it's checked daily. If you have something that you believe is criminal, you can contact us, we'll definitely take a look. If you have an encampment, you also should call us and let us know. You're going to hear from Officer White and Officer Bruckman on what they do with that information on their outreach program. And it has been pretty successful, at least trying to put, I guess, some services out there for those people. But let us know to what can do. But just because there's an encampment, you know, they have certain constitutional rights, too. We can't just go clear them out. If there's a violation of law, then, you know, we can, we can take action.
Well, we did pass an ordinance about encampments.
In certain locations, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
I'm curious, to the extent that you all are seeing any relationship between the numbers that, of youth that are being picked up, and whether that number is transferring into their adulthood, and you are seeing them as adults. So I'm really wondering, to what extent you all are partnering with our juvenile courts to either reduce or minimize or somehow interrupt some of the behavior so that you don't see them returning as adults with more violent offenses?
Absolutely. With those offenses, we do have an open gateway to our juvenile prosecutor along with the court system. And they are a case-by-case basis, depending on severity and whether or not they're repeat offenders. A lot of that does fall into the hands of the juvenile court. They have the people that are in place that are going to pick up those kids and figure out whether or not they're going to send them off to lockup, that they're going to get sentenced to jail time, or if they're going to get some type of services in-house. Not every kid that's arrested for a gun offense is being locked up. A lot of them get transported there, they go into some type of services, and they get released that day. We don't have the resources internally to try to offset all that. A lot of times it's triage. We respond, unfortunately, after the shootings have occurred. It's pretty hard to see them coming most days.
Yeah, I ask because I actually co-lead an ad hoc committee, exploring racism as a public health crisis, and they're starting to see a disproportionate number of children of color at a younger age. And so I'm just curious as to what can be done to work in partnership with the juvenile courts, because when I understand they've asked for some, some sorts of data, and a memorandum has been established, but there's been a lack of follow-through. So I wonder if that's another conversation that we could have at another time, or what do you suggest?
If you'd like to invite me to one of those committees, I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk about what we've seen. Again, we don't always have an answer for some of these things that are going on. And I think some of those questions are probably best served for the juvenile process or system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be sure to invite you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Something that you mentioned, and I believe our city manager mentioned it at our last meeting, that seems to be a constant thing, is you guys talk about how they only have to go a couple blocks to get food. Do you, and I think, you know, our city manager has actually talked about trying to have one larger facility where everybody kind of works together, so it doesn't get as spread out throughout the city. But do you think that's, in trying to, and I'm not saying places shouldn't try to help, but do you think sometimes in trying to help, they're making the problem maybe a little bit worse with, because they're helping but not helping to?
Enabling.
Yeah, they're enabling almost.
It truly is a double-edged sword, and there's no immediate answer to either side of that. It's a perfect storm when you talk about Main Avenue and what we've seen on Main Avenue, because that's where most of the resources and the services are. So that's why you'll see, unfortunately, more of these people congregating in those areas.
Mr. President, Mr. Simeone, one of the things that we have found in, as I've mentioned, we have a ton of agencies here. And that's one of the reasons I've said I'm more than happy to help those agencies that are here grow. Really don't want any more agencies coming in, because the agencies that we have here are doing a tremendous job with, with, with helping deal with these problems. What is not happening, and we found this in one of the meetings where I brought everybody together, is these agencies are not communicating with each other. Or some of the agencies are, this is my fiefdom, don't step on my turf, we're going to do what we want to do, we don't need to be part of anything bigger. During that meeting, there was actually a person that had a situation or had an issue. I think it had to do with getting warrants expunged. And our solicitor said, we have that happen, I think it's what, every Thursday?
Every Wednesday.
Every, yeah, whatever the date may be. But they didn't know, like, all these things were going on. So, so I think it's, when you mentioned that I'm talking about having the Day Center, that's where all of these agencies can be under one roof, where we can start to truly identify what programs or what help these individuals need, rather than, here's your food and out the door, or here's a gift card to whatever and out the door. It's more of that interaction and gaining trust. So, I mean, that's still my goal, that's a hope. I have a couple of meetings set up this week, hopefully advancing that. And also a meeting with, with some individuals to discuss the mental health situation that we have here. So that, that's, when you mentioned the enabling, I don't think anybody is purposely enabling or trying to do anything like that. But it makes it easier. And I think that rather than trying to find all those volunteers and trying to maintain all those programs, if we can have everybody working together out of one location, number one, we can get a true handle of how many people are really homeless, how many people are just in need of assistance, or be, or on the verge of becoming homeless, because there are several programs that prevent people from becoming homeless that we have resources available for. And, and it just, it gets a better handle on the overall situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Officer Bruckman, this is Officer White. We're going to go over a lot of the stuff you guys touched on, we've been dealing with since August of 2023, when this, this group was put together. And we found a lot of different things, a lot of different ways to help people, but a lot of it comes down to the resources we have available to us in the city. Officer White's going to open with the beginning of it.
All right. So back in August of 2023, various members, Officer Bruckman and I, as long as some of the detectives, we compiled a program that formerly known as the Homeless Initiative Team HIT. It's been a community outreach program amongst the homeless population here. And in the last year, in a few months, we've been able to gather a lot of information regarding to common areas of the homeless camps, common reasons that have been leading to homelessness, establishing, providing resources to effectively help the homeless individuals be placed in housing, sober living, other shelters. We've been able to provide medical aid and attention to homeless individuals. We've been able to identify common crimes that the homeless community has been committing, either towards the homeless, within the homeless, and by the homeless. We've also been able to determine some possible solutions to our homeless population. So in our report and our brief presentation here, we're going to go over all of these different categories of what causes it, what's leading to it, why is it thriving in our community and whatnot. So I'll go back to Officer Bruckman for...
I'm going to cover, we're going to kind of go back and forth here. I'm going to cover the, the common areas of the homeless population. A lot of it's pretty common sense. During the past year, we have learned that a homeless population gravitate primarily to wooded areas and abandoned homeless homes and buildings in the city and surrounding areas. The Ashtria Gulf and the trails were among the first areas where we observed a significant population of the homeless individuals. Officers conducted routine patrols, officers, myself and routine patrols throughout these trails and identified several camps that were set up. The camps not only created a substantial risk for fire, but also created an environmental environment filled with litter and trash that was thrown about. As our patrols continued, we noticed that a lot of the homeless population began moving out of the wooded areas, and those that remained were keeping it cleaner and neater. When we began in 2023, estimated, we estimated that there was probably 15 to 20 different camps. At the end of the summer of 2024, there was less than five in the wooded areas. Other popular areas included North Park, gazebo, and the library. Several homeless individuals use the gazebo as a place to congregate due to shelter that is provided, the lighting throughout the night, and the free outlet. They all charge cell phones there. Furthermore, local churches nearby the downtown and Main Avenue area provided the homeless with several, several meals throughout the week, leading them to stay in the area to get first to the food. And also, the library would invite them in to use the wifi so they could use their, you know, charge a cellphone and, and use the wifi to connect with the people around. So that, you know, that's, we're not saying that's a bad, but that's reasons we were finding out that we were getting the population in that area.
That's where they're at. So interacting with these homeless, the homeless population, we found that common reasons leading to homelessness, a lot of it, majority is drug use. I know that we've covered that already, but the majority state that they've gotten into drugs, their money has lost, they haven't been able to keep a job anywhere because of their drug use. And at that point, they just become homeless and they're back on the drugs. Other reasons appear to be from mental health issues leading to self-medicating with, with street illicit drugs. A lot of these individuals, you know, do suffer from mental health issues, whether, again, like it was said before, we don't know if it's from the drug use, which came first. But nonetheless, rather than going to a medical provider, they're, they're self-medicating with these street narcotics. Of the ones that have indicated street narcotics as a primary leading cause to homelessness, we learned that several of them have come from other cities, and a lot of them utilize different rehab facilities that we have in our city. A lot of them have used Square One. During their stay, this is, and again, this is just not to target Square One or anybody else, because they've been also, you know, very great in helping us. But just to give you guys real-life examples of how these situations are growing, during their stay at Square One, again, they come in for detox, and they're often under the influence of narcotics. Well, being under the influence of narcotics, they end up breaking a rule, committing an offense there, become threatening, whatever their behavior may be, and next thing you know, they get kicked out of the program. Hey, listen, we can't have you here, you're, you're a risk, okay? Square One does often provide them transportation back. However, oftentimes during their conflict, the individual says, hey, listen, I don't like you guys at Square One because you didn't let me have a cigarette. I'm not getting back in your car, I'm not going home. These individuals are coming from Parma, we've found them from Toledo, Dayton, we found them as far as coming from South Carolina and Texas to utilize Square One. And next thing you know, because, again, one way or the other, either they don't accept the transportation, or sometimes Square One says, listen, you're just too violent and you're threatening us, we had to call the police, we're not going to offer you a ride anywhere. The other issue that we're finding is that when they get checked into a rehab facility, a lot of their belongings get checked in, and they get locked down and secured. Well, when these rapidly evolving situations happen where they're getting removed from the program, they have a policy, hey, listen, we got 48 hours to give you your stuff back. Well, next thing you know, these people are on the streets of Ashtria. They don't have their cellphone, they don't have money, they don't have a ride home. They're violent, they're still worked up on drugs because it's in their system for several days. And here they are roaming the streets with nowhere to go. Well, they link up with other homeless individuals now at this point, whether it's North Park, and, oh, you got some dope? Yeah, let me score some dope, because I'm having a rough day, I got kicked out of rehab, can't get back. And, and that's what we're finding. Next thing you know, they're on the streets, they're getting their three, you know, free meals a day, whether it be from a church, a charity, you know, the library, whatever have you. And they're finding that that life is just okay for them. They don't have a reason to go back home. I mean, there's a large portion of our homeless people that are not originating from here in Ashtria City. There's also different, you know, boarding houses and transitional housing that these people are living in, they have conflict with other residents, it's not working out for them, and next thing you know, they're getting kicked out of one to the other to the other. So these are, these are different reasons of why our homeless population's growing. In addition to that, we've got other places such as ARM.C. Again, no fault to theirs, but it's the only hospital in the county that offers mental health services in a psych ward on the fifth floor. So you've got other agencies, and not just the Sheriff's Department, but you've got, you know, Roaming Shores, Jefferson. They end up dealing with a person that's having a mental crisis, and what do they do? They bring them here to Ashtria Regional Medical Center. Oftentimes, within an hour or two, they're being released because the doctors say, hey, listen, you're medically cleared, your pulse is fine, your oxygen's fine, whatever it is that they do to clear them. And then where do they at? They're here on the streets. Well, they don't have their phone because it was left at home, ambulance didn't bring them, Sheriff's Department didn't bring their cell phones. And now here we are back on the streets, you know? We also have a warming center here. Same concept. I mean, multiple times we've seen where these individuals are being dealt with outside of the city, and the answer is, well, if you go to the city, I've heard it myself, you're going to blend in with the homeless people, you're not, you're not going to cause a problem, because you'll just blend in with everybody else. Go to the warming center, they've got services. Go to the, you know, the Samaritan House, you can get housing. Go to Square One, go to Signature Health. So all of these resources here are great and dandy for everybody that's here inside the city, but it's also attracting everybody outside the city to say, hey, listen, our beautiful town, I used to work for Jefferson. I was guilty of it, too, because that was the answer that I learned as a police officer in Jefferson of, hey, this person's having a mental health crisis, move them up to Ashtria City, it's no longer our problem. It's all over the county, that's the mentality. The hospital, the rehab facilities, the warming, you know, shelter, that's, that's what it is. So those are, those are reasons that we have found how these people end up here in Ashtria City.
And the feedback we got from, like, the hospital doctors, they're saying, when he was brought here, it was a, a mental break, it was a criminal offense that should have been jailed in Jefferson or the Sheriff's Department. And when they call and they try to make contact with these other departments, they say, now it's Ashtria City Police Department's problem. They're no longer in our area. So we're stuck with their, with their, because they had no way to deal with it. They brought it here, now we have to deal with it. Okay, now back to our report. We're going to go into establishing and providing resources and, and medical aid. During our timeout with the homeless, we realized that a majority of the people don't get medical aid or even offered rehab or any, any type of services of that sort. So we, we co-partnered with Signature Health, and they came to the areas with us, and at that time, they would offer a chance for rehab, chance to get them back on their feet, chance for sober living, just resources that the police department does not have. just resources that the police department does not have. And a lot of times, people would willingly go with them, willingly take up the thing, other times, they they liked the situation they were in, so they wouldn't go. We couldn't force them into going, so. We're there. Then we, other times we found people medical, the one that sticks out really good in my head is one of the female homeless had a cyst, an abscess, something absolutely horrible. She was way back in the woods, we ended up calling C.Candia and Transporter to ACMC where she received the treatment where she probably saved her life.
So we were able to provide resources. In addition to that, you know, during our timeout, interacting with the homeless population, we were able to identify different crimes that were being committed by the homeless towards the homeless and amongst the homeless population, because there's also a lot of homeless on homeless crime. We found that they've been very active in committing several crimes, as mentioned, that some of these, some of these crimes include theft, arson, assault, prostitution. Those have been along the leading crimes that have been committed along amongst the homeless. Theft offenses occur nearly daily, with several stealing food and drinks from local convenience stores despite being banned. Other thefts have included propane tanks from dollar stores, bicycles from homes, and and other miscellaneous property from other homeless camps. Assaults appear to be on the rise amongst the homeless people, often from a result from one individual stealing from another homeless individual. And in addition to that, several sex offenses have been reported, as some have admitted to providing sexual favors in exchange for money, drugs, and even housing. It's been reported that some of these individuals have come from other cities, specifically for the sole purpose of hiring prostitutes for sexual favors and providing them with with drugs and money. So yeah, there's there's definitely an increase in criminal activity amongst the homeless population.
The final one is, we were trying to determine what can we do to curb this, turn this around? And that's where everybody comes into play, like we're talking with the chief. We got to get Square One, Signature Health, sober living homes, the hospital, council and city manager. We got to come up, because you're never going to wrest your way out of this problem. You're you're, you rest one, there's three more, you rest one, there's two more. And you're never going to wrest it out, you got to, you don't, you don't mop up the floor before you clean the leak. So we got to start working on what's causing the issue, how we can get them back on their feet to become productive or to get them back where they're home, where they have a support group. So therefore, there's lots of things that, brainstorming and then work sessions would would be glad to put into work to make, you know, the next step of our investigation, our our project.
Outreach program.
Our outreach program successful, and we're basically there at the time.
Any questions about our outreach program?
I, I-
Do you think they should be invited to the-
I do. So we're going to have a work session on January sixth at five thirty. I would love if you could come.
Well, if it's okay with you.
Yeah, that's up to our chief, but.
No, he, he tells us.
January sixth at five thirty?
Yeah, here. And and, yeah, so I I have, well, we'll wait till January sixth. I have ideas.
That's good. Any other questions about our findings or?
Mr. President, just a couple of things to note. As as kind of was mentioned here and as as I've been saying, you know, these resources are all located in the city. You do not, for as much as people say, we're not doing anything, I challenge you to find another community with the help of our churches, with the help of these organizations that are doing anything. So that's why my hair gets a little bit on edge when people say we're not doing anything to assist with the homeless situation or or provide services. These guys, you know, did a lot of this stuff on their own, came up with these programs, and and it has been working. As you see, you know, over twenty locations down in the Gulf are down to five now. So, you know, those people that are still saying the Gulf is littered with people, that's really not the case. The other, the other thing to keep in mind too, I know that people seem to claim that we have thousands of homeless people roaming around Ashibula. I know when they do the point in time counts, those numbers are sometimes less than a hundred.
We're figuring about forty.
Yeah, we'd say about forty.
We probably identify at forty.
Okay. So when we talk about the magnitude of the of the problem, well, a lot of times what we're seeing is the same person or persons. I mean, obviously, we all kind of recognize those persons or persons. Some of those people that you see lugging around all of this stuff actually have homes, actually have income coming in. They just don't want to be in those homes or don't want to play by the rules, as as was mentioned before. And even though those apartments and different housing options are available to them, they choose to be out on the street. So again, I I applaud what these guys are doing, and and they have really made a big difference, in my opinion, when it comes to, when it comes to that. As was mentioned also, we absolutely have identified people that are going places and picking up people and bringing them here to be part of the services that are offered. There is a extremely horrific underground network that is staying rich off homeless people. And that's also another thing that that this police department is is dealing with. We're not going to talk a lot about it here, but we're on to it. And and there are some bad actors out there that we hope to be rid of, yeah.
Yeah, I just had one last report, which again, we don't have to go over it in much detail, but this was a report that was compiled by Lieutenant Irwin, who's our jail administrator. This list is is simply just over the summertime, this is starting in June. So in a matter of a four-month span, we've had thirty-seven physical arrests. And you guys are welcome to take a look at this, I don't know if it's included in the packet that you guys have or not, I believe it is, okay? You'll you'll see some repeated names. Again, that's just the the nature of the beast that we're dealing with. They go to, these are physical arrests that have been booked into our jail. They've gotten out on whatever bond it may be, whether it's personal recognizance, whether it's a, you know, a couple hundred bucks. But nonetheless, those are the physical arrests, this does not include, there's three different ways that you can technically make an arrest. There's a physical arrest, a citation that can be issued. And then, of course, there's what we do oftentimes refer to the solicitor's office for them to review the report and determine if it, you know, rises to a criminal offense. So of these thirty-seven arrests, these are people that we physically taken off the streets and booked into our jail, and then we've let the, you know, the judicial system take its course. Again, and only in four, in four months, this is just on Main Avenue, Business District.
And that's about twenty percent of all arrests. That's one street. These people are known to frequent one street, they're about twenty percent of all arrests.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I'm looking at some of these stats. So is there any education for the workers at some of these, you know, places, it seems like they're in and out of, because I think it would be kind of scary if I was a worker and I'm seeing some of these, you know, that are easy in and out. They're taking something or whatever, you know, and we want these businesses, and, you know, we want them to feel safe or whatever, but do they get any kind of?
We have spoken with, I know specifically Officer White and myself, I've spoken with business owners on what's, what we're recommended to do and what not. We can't force them not to react or, you know, or to react, but we do tell them, listen, that's probably not the smartest thing you could have done.
Yeah, like to give them some tools in their toolbox if, and then maybe word on the street would be like, you know what, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna do that, these guys are, you know, they're on it and, you know, whatever the program is, because I know it'd be kind of scary if, you know, I don't know if they're coming in with a weapon or, you know, whatever.
Oftentimes, they they carry knives and machetes and and different things, you know.
So thank you for the question and thank you all for the information. My wondering is, if you share this information with business owners only after they call you, that to me is sort of a reactive approach. Is there something that you can do proactively? Like for folks who haven't had an issue, what we can do to minimize or prevent an issue from happening?
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. President, so we have in the past, we have set up, I don't know if you want to call it like a security meeting or safety meeting, just to educate employees on what to do in certain situations, whether it be dealing with a homeless person, whether that be dealing with a shoplifter, just general, you know, where you should keep your cash register, keeping that open, you know, just some of the basic stuff. They're preventative things, and and we'd be happy to set those meetings up. I think before we did that with, in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce at one time, we ran a program like that, and it's not just for Main Avenue businesses, but for any, any business owner dealing with any of that. I think the other thing to kind of note, though, when-
Before you go, so what would it take to put that in motion?
We can, we can try to establish some dates or maybe even work with the chamber again, because I think we held it at the chamber, if I'm not mistaken. But we'd be, we'd be more than happy to put put something like that together again.
Mr. Manager, and I had a meeting the other day, it was a downtown meeting, and I remember Marty from ADDA, the ADDA does have some kind of a, like a-
Safety flyer, yeah.
A safety plan, a security kind of plan, which she was going to work with. Oh, I think it's Officer Palinkas. Anyways, to get things updated, because we were going over some of, you know, what was happening and and whatnot, so I think there was some conversation on that as far as for the businesses to-
And I, and I think it's important to note too, I mean, first off, we all understand that there are people in the community that make us uneasy, that would scare any individuals just by the way they act and mannerisms and things like that. But when you look at the stats and what's reported here, we're not seeing, we're seeing crime on crime within the homeless community. We're not seeing assaults and things like that of just random individuals. There there are connections between the assaults and everything, am I, I'm saying that correctly?
Yeah, I would, I would say your your more violent crimes are being committed amongst each other. The ones that affect our general population that are housed would be like your theft offenses and and especially the businesses, the, you know, the theft offenses. There's oftentimes that, you know, you'll get a shoplifter from Circle K, and it it takes less than thirty seconds to walk in, grab something, and walk right out. Well, by the time that we're able to respond, I I know that most of, most of these incidents occur in our, what we consider District Two zone. I don't know how much you guys are aware of what the District Two responsibilities are, but as a District Two patrolman, and each day you get a different district, but District Two is responsible for everything that's south of Route Twenty. And your responsibilities are not only to patrol, but you're also the jailer. So now you have to do hourly checks on the jail. So every hour, you're coming off the streets, removing yourself from patrol to check on an inmate, okay? Every single inmate that we have in there. Now you have to give them their medications. Now you have to feed them because now it's noon. Well, now you've had two new arrests, so you have to take them up to jail. Well, now you've got a call in the lobby because somebody walks in to file a complaint. Well, meanwhile, somebody on Jefferson Avenue called to file that their packages were stolen. That's been waiting for two hours, because it's been one thing after another, after another. So the District Two car, which primarily handles the Business District, is is tasked with far more responsibility than I would say any other district, you know? And and oftentimes, the other districts will come down to assist that District Two car, okay? So-and-so is tied up in the jail doing meals, well, now we send another district's car down here, okay? So now you don't have Ann Avenue or the Harbor getting patrolled, you know? So when we have time, we do try to do extra patrols on Main Avenue, but a lot of it is District Two is the least patrolled district for that reason. Your District Two car is responsible for pretty much a lot during the day.
I have a question. So when Officer D'Angelo was walking Main Avenue, which the business owners love, 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 loved him, did you see crime or or calls going down during that time?
Especially where he was patrolling, yes, and and we'll let him speak, he does have a brief presentation for you guys as far as that goes. But during our outreach program, we noticed a shift of where this activity was happening. And yes, the the main strip of Main Avenue in that Business District went down significantly, a lot of it was happening in the Gulf, it was happening at other areas throughout the city, closer towards the west side, you know, Taco Bell area and whatnot. Now they've migrated, obviously, behind Dollar General, Mr. Heroes, there's property back there that we're currently actively working on, moving people along from there. But yes, I mean, when he was actively patrolling.
So patrolling Main Avenue did work?
It absolutely did, and again, because, you know, his responsibilities were more of a community outreach proactive, you know, response.
Everybody loved him, loved him.
And we also noticed that-
Mr. President, I think, but what's key to say, what Officer White said there was, yes, it helped Main Avenue, it pushed the problem to other locations.
That's what I was just going to say, and I seen even our efforts. As I found, and I just found them the other day when I was at Planet, there's a whole camps now behind Planet Fitness in the woods back there. So if we can keep moving them, but it doesn't really fix the problem. And eventually, they're going to move them back our way.
I'd be lying if I said it wasn't like playing whack-a-mole, you you get them down over here, they pop up over here. You go work this area, they're back up over here, and it's, you're chasing your tail in this never-ending cycle of, well, how do we fix this problem?
Until we get them out of even the drugs or the mental health issues or the, back to the families that can properly support them in that direction.
Any other questions?
It just pushes them to another area when he works Main Avenue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hang on, hang on. I want to thank these two ops, excuse me, officers for stealing all my material that I had, and my sinuses are draining. Yeah, they stole everything that I was going to talk about, okay, get out of here. And I I apologize. They did steal a lot of my material. For those that don't know me, my name is Pat D'Angelo, and I am Campus Resource Officer, thank you, for Ashbola, Kent State. And during the the summer months and when they're on break, I perform patrol and foot patrol on the Main Avenue Business District, surrounding areas, the parks, and library, South Park, North Park. And I I I come to realize that in my old age, I can't ever say that I I seen or heard at all because the homeless, they they shock me with what they're capable of doing in such a short period of time. One of my pet peeves in primary places that I like to patrol is the parking deck, because I have, I have an affinity with that, because in nineteen seventy-two, nineteen seventy-three, I was a seventy, seventeen, eighteen-year-old police cadet patrolling that during their grand opening, so I have a connection with that. And so I give that a lot of attention, I find a lot of homeless people in there. I know that Head Start employees use that for parking, as do some of the other business owners on Main Avenue. And some of the apartment dwellers on Main Avenue use that. So I give that a lot of attention, and whenever I find that the upper levels, which have been cordoned off with chain link fence, whenever I find it damaged and breached, I take pictures, I send the pictures to Chief Stell, Chief Stell sends the pictures to the city manager and it works its way down to Public Works, and they take care of it. But as fast as that, they take care of it within days, because they have nothing but time on their hands. Within days, it's it's breached again, and it's just like a never-ending cycle. I enjoyed the interaction walking Main Avenue Business District. I enjoyed talking to the business owners, their clients, customers, and citizens that are walking on the street. In fact, I also took great pleasure in telling them about the the highlights of the city and of the county, because I love the history of of our city. And despite the fact that the officers tell everyone that I was involved in the assassination investigation of President Lincoln, you know, I I still think I'm a viable part of the Ashbola City Police Department. So my normal hours during the summer months and when there's no school is seven o'clock in the morning till five o'clock, Monday through Thursday. And, but my normal work period is from seven o'clock, or excuse me, six-thirty to five o'clock, because I always leave about a half hour early and I patrol the the city looking for what I call my hotspots, where we're getting a lot of problems, where we're getting the calls. They're sleeping back behind Park Haven, or they're on the portico of Park Haven, or they're in the parking deck, or, oh, they don't need heavy bushes and vacant lands and trees and foliage and all that stuff. Any high grass, two foot, they'll stay there, you know? They go back behind the old Great Drugs on on Lake Avenue, they go behind McDonald's. They go back behind Dublin Downs. There's an area that's maybe about a ten-foot square piece of land that has high bushes, well, they go there. You know, I, I realize that they come here looking for help and you have to admit that we do have all the MECA's, all the drawing cards that they, that they want, that they're looking for. And they have a better communication system than NASA, because once, once they find like an, uh, an available outside electrical outlet where they can charge up their, their cell phones or their, their games or whatever, within hours, certainly standing in line, waiting their turn to go and use that. I also want to acknowledge Captain Steve Chase over from the Fire Department, Fire Inspector Bureau. Together, he and I, we, we work together really good, mainly like the Park Haven, where they keep on breaching the building, going into the basement and sleeping and starting fires and all that stuff. And soon as we find out that it's breached, we go there, we open it up, we get a contingency of officers and we clear it, and then we try to resecure it. And he's made contact with the absentee landowner or representative to the owner. And he, he has been getting some pretty good response, but still, that's, that's a trouble spot. Like I said, there's, uh, the end result of them coming over here seeking treatment and they get kicked out of the, the treatment program because of non-compliance or whatever reason. The end result is always the same, they're here, we're stuck with them, they're, they're taxing our resources. There was never any end plan for them, once they get out of the program, to get out of here. We, uh, one of our detective lieutenants was on an ad hoc, uh, homeless, uh, panel and committee, and he came to me, he says, "What, what do you think about offering the homeless that were brought here, for whatever reason? Why don't you see if they would be willing to go back home if we provide free transportation?" So whenever I would come up to a homeless person, I would ask them that question. And out of twenty, only one said that he would think about it. They like it here, they have every, everything that they could imagine. You have homeless person that everyone sees on Route 20, soon as they enter Ashbola, laying on the sidewalk, and people stop and throw pizzas. They throw money. We're enabling them. Like the City Manager was talking about, uh, handing out the free meals and all that stuff. Well, you know, they, they give them the food in takeout containers. They go across the street to North Park, South Park. They eat what they want, they throw the rest right on, on the, uh, the gazebo or on, on the grass. Public Works has to pick that up. People from out of town are driving by there and they see it looks like, like a landfill. We should consider having whatever agency that wants to provide these, uh, these resources, make them, serve them at their facility, instead of making it easy for them to leave with the food containers and throw everything on, on the ground. But Chief, or, excuse me, Captain Chase, we also went several times on walks down the Indian Trails, looking for encampments and looking for fires and making sure that everything's okay. So he's been a great resource. We also have our Animal Control Officer, that's also involved with housing and enforcement and code enforcement and all that stuff. They always call us if there's a house that's been vacant and suspected, uh, entry by homeless. We go there and we assist them, and we, we come up with a game plan and, uh, that hopefully will stop further, uh, entry into the house. Because next thing you know, that house is gonna be condemned and you can't salvage it. Like I said, they stole so much. Being homeless is, is not a, a crime, and we must remember that. Our homeless issue is just not an Ashbola issue, or Ashbola County, or Ohio, but it's a national. The knee-jerk reaction is to arrest and jail the individual, which would not only lead to overcrowding in our jails, both local Ashbola and the county jail, and our judicial system. Our jails these days should be reserved for the worst of the worst. And that includes some, you know, uh, mother homeless, uh, the most violent offenders. Arresting a homeless person could only possibly tie up our limited jail space for several weeks, because once we get them in our facility and they go through the court system, and rightfully so, the, the judge is gonna order an assessment either for mental health or for, uh, uh, drugs and alcohol. And that could possibly take weeks, especially if, uh, the court is told that, yes, they should have placement into a facility, then they stay in our facility until an opening occurs. So it's, uh, it's imperative that, you know, we, uh, we treat this program, but as stated, we, we treat it from a legislation and legislative, uh, standpoint than with criminal. And I have made many arrests, believe it or not. I, over the past two years handling the, the detail, I probably made a total of twenty, twenty-five arrests, including trespassing, open container, disorderly conduct. And everyone that I come in contact with that committed a, a crime, because you do need, uh, probable cause, we always run them through our, our computer to see if they're wanted on, on any outstanding warrants. And a lot of them are. However, the agency that has them entered is refusing to come in, to take them, for whatever reason. And one of the first questions they ask, well, do they have any, uh, medical problems? Well, a majority of them, you know, do have that problem. So automatically, they refuse them, because they don't want to incur the, uh, the cost of it and, uh, you know, for the treatment and, uh, you have to, uh, when they get them in their facility, then you gotta call a squad, then you gotta bring them for medical treatment. So it's, uh, it's a vicious cycle, it's gotta stop, and I thank you. Questions?
Thank you, any questions?
I just want-
Let me, let me, hang on.
I want to make a statement. In the eleven years I've been gone from the court, nothing has changed. It's the same, I hear the same thing. I'm shaking my head because it's all the same. It's the same stuff over and over and over again.
You ever watched the movie Groundhog Day?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, I know that was a lengthy presentation. Just wanna, just touch on one thing, uh, when we were discussing the arrests on Main Avenue. We went through and identified, Lieutenant Irwin did, and identified the people that we're talking about that were causing the problems on Main Avenue. It wasn't all the arrests on Main Avenue, that's just simply the ones that were identified as the quote-unquote homeless people. Still accounts for twenty percent of all arrests, so we're pretty, we're pretty active in that, in that regard. But that said, I just wanted to thank you for your time and appreciate all the guys for coming out. I thought they did a great job. I've, I've surrounded myself with very smart people and, uh, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President, uh, so I, I thank you for allowing me to have that presentation here tonight. And again, I, I think, um, uh, you know, I, I, as I said the last meeting, I'll take, I'll take ownership of that. We don't do a good enough job of informing everyone of, of all these different things that we're doing, some of which is intentional. Other things that, like we presented today, um, are, are things that we should keep you up to date on, that are happening not only downtown, but throughout our entire city. As I mentioned, we're, you know, my goal is still this day center and as, as was mentioned here several times, so that it's not a situation where people are just grabbing food and running and going other places and messes are being created places, but that everybody can start working together and how can we do some of this food distribution better? How can we then have that in with people and gain trust with people in a setting that is, um, that is a respectable setting, so that you're not eating in, in a gazebo during a thunderstorm? And, and be able to get people somewhat out of the elements and provide the services that they actually need by organizations able to help and able to break the cycle, not to continue the cycle. That, that is the goal. And, and, and work to start alleviating these problems. But as you can see, the services that we have here, other communities have to start providing, because in my opinion, we, as I've said many times, we're the only one doing a lot of this stuff. And you hear it from these guys now as well, some of them being trained in other communities to make sure you get them up to Ashbola, so. Thank you, guys, and, and I'm glad Officer D'Angelo mentioned, Captain Chase from our Fire Department has been doing an, uh, outstanding job with a lot of what's, what's been going on and has seen a lot of the issues that we've had, so.
All right, he's off the end too.
All right.
All right, so for those that don't know, I am the Fire Marshal for the City of Ashbola. I've had that position for nine years now. In the past five years, hmm, five, six years, there's been really an explosion of homeless in this community. I've worked diligently with, with Mary Church, Plank Community Development, to remove some of the vacant houses, because as these officers have all said, vacant houses are, they, they are horrible. The City Manager here a few years ago was looking at another building to house City Council, eight hundred square feet. I, I went in that building, and you know the one I'm talking about. I went in that building and I had to contact the owner of that building and have him bring two thirty-yard dumpsters to clean it out, because homeless people had broken in there and they leave behind whatever they bring. So it's, it's a huge problem, but you guys as City Council have, have the bigger issue, because the homeless is two, there's two problems here. There's the mental health issue, which we all agree, the majority of the homeless people around here, it is a mental health issue. It's a drug issue that's either exacerbated by mental health issue or it's a mental health issue exacerbated by drugs, vice versa, whichever way there. But there's another problem that, that you as council are faced with, and that is, you, you have a responsibility to hope, to help the homeless, as everybody in this county does, because as these guys have told you, we're getting homeless from the entire county, because we have the services. But the problem that you guys are faced with is, you also have the responsibility to protect the citizens of this coun, of this city. Not of the county, of the city. You're the elected officials for this city, one that I live in and have lived in for a long time now. So how you balance those two issues is, is something you're gonna have to struggle with. And the bigger problem with the homeless that I see in dealing with them is they don't want to follow standard customary humane behavior. They want to do what they want to do and they leave a mess and they intimidate people, they scare people. I'll be honest with you, I've been in a number of vacant houses, middle of the night, dark, whatever. They're mostly harmless against the, the normal citizenry here. Their, their, their issues are fighting amongst themselves and petty crime. That's what you're gonna have. I don't know who it was that mentioned theft from, of propane cylinders. I've probably personally returned fifteen propane cylinders to Walgreens, because that's what they steal. They, they do petty theft and they have drug issues. But I encourage you guys to balance those two issues, because that's what I try to do, is balance, can we help them? Fine, I would love to help them. Gone out of my way to help homeless people and some people in homes, um, way beyond what my, the scope of my work is. But there's people that you just can't help. And we are catering to them, and I encourage you guys to balance those two issues.
So Captain Chase, before you go, I have a question. Mr. President, may I?
Oh, go ahead, yes.
Okay, thank you. Tell the City Council a little bit about what you've done in terms of the encampments that you come across.
So my problem with encampments is no different than vacant houses. My issue with the vacant houses, quite frankly, I don't mind the homeless so much in vacant houses. I don't mind the homeless in, in encampments. My problem, especially with vacant houses, um, it's winter time. They go in vacant houses, they start fires, which means the house is now on fire and there's five guys sitting at the fire station, have to go to that house, and then they have to decide, is there a possibility of somebody being in it? Somebody mentioned Park Haven here, oh, Pat mentioned Park Haven and how we've boarded up. We boarded it up because we don't want to have openings there and go there when it's on fire and say, "We now have to search this twelve thousand square foot building to see if there's any homeless in it." It's the same thing with vacant houses. There are firemen in this country killed every year, searching vacant houses for homeless people. Thirty years ago, Worcester, Massachusetts, lost six firemen in a, in a warehouse, searching for homeless people that set the warehouse on fire and were not inside. It, it happens, and, and my goal for the next year of my career here is to make sure that none of my guys die in a, in a vacant house. But it's the same thing with the encampments. The solicitor just mentioned this, and somebody mentioned Dollar General. I got notified about Dollar General, and there's two giant encampments behind Dollar General that are, they're dump truck loads worth of debris and, and materials have been left behind there. And those are just as hazardous. We had a, wasn't in the city, but, uh, this past summer, we had the fire down in the Gulf that, that a homeless encampment burned up. And the individual that was down there wasn't injured in that, but three weeks prior to that, he'd been injured in a fire in his own encampment that he accidentally started. So the, the mess they leave behind is the problem. I mean, we don't mind the homeless people that are out there. That's not the issue that people have with them. The issue they have with them is the petty crime, the drugs, the mess they leave behind. It, it's, it's not the homeless people, they're just people. And if they would relatively behave, I don't think too many people would have a problem with it. But I've made a point of going and finding these encampments and getting them cleaned up. And ultimately, it falls back to the owner of the property. You own the property, you're responsible for it. I, I gave the example to somebody a week or so ago that if somebody came by your house and dumped three tires in your front yard, you're gonna be mad about it, right? I would be. And you'd love to get them to go back and clean up the mess that they left there. But here's the problem, you don't know who they are, they have no means to clean it up. And if you don't go out there and clean it up, number one, you have the eyesore, but number two, by the next morning, you're gonna have six tires out there. So it, it, it's, it's back to the property owners to, um, clean up the mess that's left behind them. I'm sorry it's done that way, I'm sorry that it's been left there, but again, this goes back to getting people to be responsible for themselves. Good? You're welcome. Anything else? I really didn't plan on talking, but-
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys, for coming, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question. Chief Stell, do you have an electronic copy of this, electronic version?
I don't at the moment, but I can certainly make that happen.
Great, thank you.
I will, I will get that and distribute it to council.
All right, thank you.
Electronically, yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Timmonier and Chief, for, uh, having that presentation. We will continue on with our meeting. Ms. Cooper, do you have anything this evening?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Augustine?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Augustine. And Ms. Bell?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Well, we do that. Can I ask one more question?
Oh, yes.
About the unhoused population. So I was speaking with the business owner and resident of the city, and they were, um, wondering, to what extent can we, um, purchase and establish more lighting? Because their belief is that when you shed a light, they will scurry. Now, of course, it's not gonna solve the problem, because they're just gonna go someplace else, but to what extent, at least in the business areas and nearby, whether it's park, we can have better lighting to deter encampments?
Mr. President, Ms. Holman, so last year, I think it was last year or the year prior, we had all of the streetlights changed out to LED, which did put a lot more light on there. And then we have also redone the lighting again with LED around Collins Boulevard and also on Park Avenue with all the poles that we own. We haven't, we have enhanced all that lighting in those areas. In the parks, we do have, there's a light, um, a pretty bright light inside the gazebo, plus there are, um, the decorative pole lighting within those parks. Other than that, um, many years prior, we did light the parking deck. We changed all those out to LED on the first two floors as well and around the perimeter of the building. That's, I mean, that's what we've done in the last few years for lighting.
Has it improved anything?
I think it's improved the light distribution. Has it done anything with, um, people walking around at night and things like that? Probably not. And I don't know if adding more of it would. If we can identify some areas, if there's a way to do lighting in areas where people congregate, it may. But again, as I said, especially like with the gazebo, it's helped us be able to identify whether people are in it or not because of the bright light there.
So would it be helpful to identify areas where they tend to congregate and us check the lighting to see if we can?
We can do that, I think our guys have already done that, so, yeah.
Excuse me?
I think our guys have already identified- I think our guys have already identified those locations, so, yeah.
But if we have others, we can submit those to you or to whom?
Sure.
Or to councilors?
Chief, you wanna add something?
Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal, I'm sorry, I gave you a promotion.
I will tell you that it's a good idea to have lights, but no matter what you do, like Pat D'Angelo said, they will find a spot without lights. And I can give you the perfect example of this right now. There's a billboard on Lake Avenue, just on the other side of 32nd Street, right? Lit up, well, it's a billboard, right? Right behind that billboard is a homeless encampment. It's lit up as well as even people because it's tucked back into that little area there. There's nothing you can do. The old medicine shop that was on the corner of Main and Park Place, that right there, that's pretty well lit up. They will go down in the stairwell there and use it back all day long, all night long. There's no way that you can put enough light out to cover all the areas of the city unless we put up another ridiculous amount of lights and cut down all the trees. You just not gonna. I mean, I'm sure that there's areas that can use more light and I'll be happy to go look at them, the police department will be happy to go look at them.
Please.
Same areas, but to think that that's gonna solve the problem of making it more visible and running them to other areas, it's not gonna work.
And to your point, because we don't have a solution to solve it, are there things that we could do to improve it?
I don't, and I'm just, it's a nice idea, but I, and I'm sure there are areas that can use more light, but that billboard is a perfect example to be, because I just found that in the past two weeks and I've been back there three times and it's grown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fire Marshal.
Mr. President, one quick, this would probably be for a city manager. Have we ever looked at, or maybe we do have some somewhere, just almost like city cameras or like security cameras, closed circuit, you know, type stuff for, you know, in the trouble areas?
Actually, the Ashtabula Downtown Development Association is installing cameras and we've given them permission to put them on the poles that we own along Main Avenue. The only other place that there's cameras, again, that was a partnership with the Liftbridge Community Association down in the harbor. Has it turned anything? I can't say for sure. Have we been able to locate individuals after something has happened? Yes.
All right, we'll continue on with our meeting. Community development, is there a report?
No report. Our next meeting is November 15th and Amanda Triata from CDC will be our guest.
Counselor, what is CBC?
Civic Development.
Civic Development Corporation.
Civic Development Corporation.
Thank you.
Finance and personnel?
Yes, we will have a meeting on November 15th, which is next Friday, and that's right here at 8:30 a.m.
Public Works, you have a report, right?
Um, yes, we did have a meeting and I'll try to make this brief. We met on Tuesday, October 22nd, here at 8:30 a.m. And the city manager went over his report. Pretty much the parks are closing for the season, so the guys are getting things wrapped up there. Then it was round three of the road cuts today. We were four and five, we're already on that. They're finishing their punch list so that the paving project can be finalized. The asphalt plants typically close at the end of November, but it also depends on the weather. So we've had unusually warm weather and it looks like even the next few weeks. Water pollution report, Superintendent Mark Verzella gave the report. They hired a new employee who will complete training by the end of the week. Once the training is complete, the current swing shift operator will be moving to maintenance. We did purchase the new freight liner dump truck for hauling the sludge. They were gonna do a few modifications and that would be to accommodate what the department needs. So do we have the, is the truck in yet?
The tandem?
New one?
Yes, it's here.
Okay. So there, are the accommodations, are still working on those?
Accommodations for.
Mark was gonna, they were gonna do a couple things modifying?
Oh, yes, yes. I think they're almost done with that. We had to put a seal on the back of it, so there were a few things that we had to do once I got here, yeah.
Okay.
I believe they're gonna bring the truck to your next meeting.
Oh, okay.
You're not allowed to drive it, but I think they're bringing it, so.
Can I see out the front? The department's working with Aqua to resolve issues with the potable water system. The transfer switch, the automatic one on the bar screen generator was replaced. The industrial pretreatment inspection is ongoing. That was for October. This is state mandated inspection. So working with Assistant Solicitor Colgan for an update to the industrial pretreatment ordinance. So that is going for legislation this evening, ordinance 933.12 and 933.13. That was actually sent to the EPA for a little bit of changes. So that would be to sort of make things flow a little bit smoother when there are any violations that come up. And we appreciate her looking at all this legislation to make sure what is in writing is what we're doing and we appreciate all that work. So that will be read this evening. Let's see. Currently, the department is working with Army Corps of Engineers and Ohio Department of Natural Resources to obtain permits for the relocation of the outfall. Once approved, we submit a permit to install to the EPA for review and approval. After they approve that, we can proceed with going out to bid to contract to install the new outfall. And I always ask, like, when is this gonna be done? So this is not just, it's not a super fast process, which is why renting the pumps at 16,000 a month, we've put to purchase the two of those. Public Works, Superintendent Melnick gave that report. They're continuing with tree removal and stumping with this good weather, completing catch basin repairs and patching, finishing repairs on Walnut Boulevard and West Third, still picking up leaf bags. Jet vac was sent to the manufacturer for repair. And it seems like every meeting, I'm saying something about our jet vac. And we finally got it back. The parts from Italy came in, so the manufacturer is covering the cost and send a temporary jet vac. So do we have any updates on that at all?
We should have our jet vac next Tuesday, is projected finished date.
Okay. And how much is, say we wanted to buy a new jet vac, how much?
The one we're currently renting is about $700,000.
And we just have the one of those?
We have one that's a jet vac and then we have one that's just a jet as a backup.
Okay. So that's where we're at on that one. Old business. So the city and the county are researching grants to help with the city's recycling. So the approximate cost is a little over a million dollars that we need. So there's 2,800 households that need the service that are left in the city approximately. So the trucks for the service are 280,000 each. We would like two of those. The totals are about $50, which I think the last time when they initiated recycling, they were like 40. So that wasn't too bad. I was kind of impressed with the price of 50. Mr. Manager said that the ones, when they started recycling, seemed to hold up very well. So at $50 each, we need about 280,000 for the totals. The sanitation department is researching the current routes also to verify if garbage pickup and sanitation could be done on the same day. So instead of having that rotation thing, it would just be easier. Put your trash out, put your blue and yellow bin out and you don't have to remember, is this the odd week, which week are we on? So they'd like to do that in two phases. The recycling, I don't know if people know this, the recycling actually goes to Twinsburg. The county pays for that transfer. So, and we utilize our local landfill, which will decrease when we do fully recycle. So we would save on transfer fees to the landfill, but there's some changes that would happen with different funding when we would decrease that going there. So it's sort of balancing the scale there. So that was a good report on that. So our next meeting, we are gonna have a meeting on Tuesday, November 26th, at 8:30 a.m. before Thanksgiving. Our next, if we would need one in December, it would be Christmas Eve and we're not gonna do that. So if we need something, we would schedule something down on Christmas Eve. That was that.
Thank you, Mrs. Mills.
You're welcome.
Safety forces did not meet, they will not meet next week because it's Veterans Day. The Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission have not met this month yet and did not meet last month. Okay, so we have come to the legislative part of our meeting. Our agenda, if anybody would like to comment on any legislative items tonight, the city manager will be entering into agreements with Ohio CAT, Rocky Road Paving, Ron Yak Paving, the Ohio, changing the ordinance, our jet ordinance for Ashtabula for wastewater conveyance, two ordinances dealing with the wastewater treatment plant when a business is found in violation. And then the city manager entering an easement with the Illuminating Company. Would anybody like to comment on any of those items? Seeing no one, Ms. Bell, will you read us tonight's legislation, please?
Ordinance number 2024-136, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ohio CAT for the purpose of two 12-inch pumps and equipment for water pollution control. Ordinance number 2024-137, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Rocky Road Paving for various street cut road restorations. Ordinance number 2024-138, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Rocky Road Paving for various street cut road restorations. Ordinance number 2024-139, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter to change order number two with Ron Yak Paving LLC for the 2024 city paving program. Ordinance number 2024-140, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement with the County of Ashtabula for wastewater conveyance, treatment, and disposal. Ordinance number 2024-141, an ordinance repealing in its entirety codified ordinance section 933.12 and 933.13 for the purpose of enacting new industrial wastewater pretreatment enforcement legislation. Ordinance number 2024-142, an ordinance enacting replacement codified ordinance section 933.12 entitled industrial wastewater pretreatment enforcement and section 933.13 entitled industrial wastewater pretreatment penalties, costs, and damages. Ordinance number 2024-143, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement with the Cleveland Electrical Illuminating Company for an easement for the provision of electric to the Ohio Avenue Extension Pump Station.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Is it council's desire to handle tonight's agenda in consent agenda format?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Holman moves. Ms. Foglio second. All in favor?
Aye.
We will handle, anyone opposed? We will handle it in consent agenda by a seven to zero vote. Can I have a motion to waive the reading of the entire legislation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Ms. Holman. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the legislation in its entirety by a seven to zero vote. May I have a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
We will waive two readings by a seven to zero vote. We will now vote on adoption of the legislation. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Guerrero?
Yes.
Mr. Simeone?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. De Giacomo?
Yes.
All items of legislation have been adopted by a seven to zero vote. Is there any other thing? Any other legislation? I don't believe so.
No, sir.
Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Does anyone have anything for, tell us something we don't know?
I.
Harbor Gardens, yeah.
What's that?
Harbor Gardens.
Harbor Gardens.
Oh, I don't have one. Oh, all right, I'm sorry. Thank you. We have a liquor license request for Harbor Gardens and that, I believe, is in Ward Two and it's a beer for beer only. Mr. Guerrero, that is your Ward or any other counselor? Does anyone have concerns about that?
I talked to Ms. Diallo and she's got like the local food, health food thing going down there and her intentions are for locally distilled spirits is what she wants to sell down there. I don't have a problem with it, which I guess is basically what I'm saying.
Oh, all right, so.
Mr. President, just for clarification, it does say C1 permit on there and a C1 permit is for beer in sealed containers as takeout, so no consumption on site. It'll just be like a convenience store, but beer only at the.
Yeah, maybe like local brew. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, that we missed that, that I missed that. Does anyone have anything for, tell us something we don't know?
I do.
Go ahead, please.
This is an announcement from Tim Dibble. The City of Ashtabula's Veterans Day Ceremony will take place on November 11th at 11 a.m. So far, we have a guest speaker, Mr. Benjamin Schwartz Fager, Chief Warrant Officer, U.S. Army Retired. Ben is the Director of Ashtabula County Veteran Service Commission and will discuss veterans' benefits, the new Veteran Service Commission facility, and other issues. Master of Ceremonies will be Timothy Dibble, Commander of Private Henry Kalinowski, Marine Corps League Detachment 782 of Ashtabula. We will also have the American Legion Dewey Hollitt Post, Number 103, Joint Veterans Color Guard, Under Honor Guard Commander Lengieri of Post 103. Remember, Veterans Day is a day we thank our veterans and those still serving for the service to our country. Thank them, console them, and remember, some wounds aren't visible. Reach out to a veteran and help prevent veteran suicide as we lose 22 per day. So I just want to say at this time, thank all the veterans for their service to this country.
Thank you, Mrs. De Giacomo. Anyone else have anything to share this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a reminder that our Christmas parade, it's coming up. It's Friday, the 22nd of November downtown, and I believe the theme this year is the Grinch.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? This is the time for the meeting that we will have any members of the public who would like to address council. If you would, please approach the podium, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Apologies for being so slow. My name is Reverend Joseph Woods. I am the Senior Pastor at First Baptist Church of Ashtabula. My address, I live in Jefferson at 1454 East Jefferson Street, Jefferson, Ohio, 44047. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, distinguished members of the city's. distinguished members of the city staff, I come to you as somebody who serves on the front line when it comes to the homeless problem here in Ash T'Beulah County. I have been here for five years. I have attended more meetings than I care to think about about how we're going to deal with it. In each meeting I sit through, I hear lots of people talking about the problems over and over and over again. It doesn't change. As Counselor Fol- said, same thing. 12 years, she's heard the same events. Einstein says if you try to solve a problem by doing the same things over and over and over again, it's called insanity. And I'm afraid, I feel like that's where we're at right now. Has anyone applied for any additional funding to take care of the homeless situation? Has anybody contacted any of the national organizations that are having successes in communities all across the country in the area of homeless and combating homelessness? Because I see you sitting there and I know your heart is to do something, but I never hear somebody say, here's what we're going to do, step by step, get to that point. And after five years of being the guy who's been on the front line, who we're enabling, and I only enable, I don't want to have to serve breakfast because that's a cost to us. My entire staff is all volunteer. I've been chased with a person with a hatchet. I've had a person with a long stick come after me. I'm in the middle of the trench. And so, when I come to these meetings and I hear about, well, we're going to discuss it some more, it's frustrating. Because how long do you need to discuss something before you start to have actions take place? It's talked about at day center, then it might be at Geo Ministries. I talked to Geo Ministries today and I said, is this true? No. So, why that was reported that way, I don't know.
I never said it was going to be at Geo Ministries.
Well, it was suggested in the paper, or otherwise the paper got the wrong article and misquoted you. But I've heard that before. And my frustration is, and just for my congregation, we're in a neighborhood that we can't grow because of the issues that are developing around our neighborhood. But my faith tells me I have to respond to people who are in need. I would invite any of you, come down to our breakfast any morning. We serve breakfast 312 days a year. And for some of these folks, it's the only meal they get. We talk about them being hanging out downtown. They have no transportation. I'm starting to see people in their 50s and 60s now because they're being forced out of their homes because rents are going up so high. I'm starting to see, hear landlords saying they're going to have to raise rents again because property values went up. We just heard this, I'm a member of the Community Action Board. 15 landlords said you can expect a $25 to $75 increase in rents come the first of the year. That means more and more of our people on fixed incomes are going to have to choose. Most of them have already lost their homes because they couldn't afford the property tax in the first place. And now, the rental properties that they are staying in will become unaffordable. What are we going to do for those folks? Every study that's out there that says your first problem in any homeless situation is housing. We've got all these people that have mental issues, that have drug problems. But if we try to fix the mental issue and the drug problem, where do they go? The needs assessment that was done last year for Ash T'Beulah County said, we have people who receive vouchers to get help for housing. And those vouchers expire because they cannot find places they can afford. So, if the council wants to do something creative, think about how you begin to address the nature of housing in this city. Because until we can put people in places where they can be safe, they're going to be on the street. And we're going to have this same conversation over and over and over again. And quite frankly, as a pastor, it's frustrating. We don't have the resources that the city has, but we do everything we can to help provide a meal, help provide clothing. I'm at the end of the street from square one. They turn people out on the street. Where do you think they go first? Do I turn them away? I can't. My responsibility as a Christian is to feed the hungry, to clothe the naked. So, when I hear that we're enabling them, I'm only enabling them because nobody else is doing their job. So, my request to you is, do your part. I love the police. They come down and talk to us. If they're looking for somebody, they'll come in. The fire marshal has come in and asked us. But every, we try to work as hard as we can with the city, but now I'm saying to you, we need your help. And it can't be concepts all the time. We need to start putting something together. Three years ago, we presented an option to the city manager. And not just for a day center, because that's not going to work. So, fine, you take care of them during the day. What happens at night? Well, that's when most of the activities that we're complaining about take place. And so, I'm asking you. No, I'm begging you. I will work with you in any capacity I can. But let's stop talking about the issue and actually working for a solution. If you need ideas, I guarantee, I spent the last two days online looking at various organizations and the successes they are having. But it takes putting your feet to the ground and rolling up your sleeves and doing it, not just talking about it. We've talked this issue to death. Everything that you heard these police officers say here tonight, I heard two years ago in a meeting.
Thank you, Reverend. We appreciate you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate your time. God bless you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would just point out that everything those officer says wasn't just lip service. Those are the things that we have implemented and we are doing.
Oh, I'm not arguing with that.
Thank you, thank you. The next speaker, please.
Good evening. St. John Youth Football is coming to the podium tonight, thanking the city and its council members. Just letting you know that we've had a very good experience over at Masucci Field this year. I feel as though it was a step in the right direction for our program. You've definitely given us the, you know, the chance to grow. And we did see some growth this year. We found some really good local support, whether it be retailers, contractors, excavators, into renovating a property that had kind of been neglected there over time just because of lack of use. We definitely put it to good use this year. We had 80 youth involved four, five times a week from the, you know, the month of June all the way through, really October. We actually made the playoffs this year, had a really good year. And I think we had a really good experience in the community. Everybody kind of welcomed us over in Ward Two. And I just thank you. Well, I guess, hopefully you guys didn't have too many complaints from us from maybe oversellers coaching, being a little loud. But working in the public sector myself, a lot of things can be expected of you, but really just wanted to come and say, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
We appreciate you coming and we're so glad that it's being used. You know, there used to be football played there way back in the 60s and before that, because I know. So, we're just so glad and we're glad it's working out for you. We appreciate you using the field and having the program.
Now, do I, Mr. President? I understand that you guys want to do some expansion stuff. You're going to present to the Parks Committee and go through that channel?
Certainly, there'd be some things that we've kind of come up across that just due through lack of use. There's some things that have kind of been needing some upgrading. We definitely have done our share of helping out along the way. And some things have kind of been brought to attention here. And I guess we'd love to sit down at later time-
Brainstorm with things, yes.
Yeah, that would be for sure, so.
Sounds good.
Looking forward to the future here and I think things are going in the right direction, so. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Could you state your names in the microphones, please? Your names.
I'm Dean Filer.
Thank you.
Mike Fusick.
Thank you.
Yes.
And could you spell your last name, Mike?
F is in Frank, U, S is in Sam, E is in Edward, K is in kite.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody ready to send to the Browns?
We can't hit in the mic.
Offseason workouts start soon, no.
Anything would be better than what we got. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eric Steinhefer. I am not a resident of Ash T'Beulah, but I work at Ash T'Beulah County Family YMCA. I'm here tonight to address city council and city administration on the matter that affects our community. We are indeed facing challenges concerning individuals who are homeless and/or experiencing mental health issues. And I believe it's crucial that we come together and find sustainable solutions. Since this was addressed at the last city council meeting, it seems that some progress is underway. Councilwoman Jane De Giacomo introduced legislation focused on addressing trespassing on publicly-owned property, bringing renewed attention to this issue. However, it's important to note that the YMCA is not a publicly-owned or government-owned property. It is considered private property. This distinction is significant on how it affects the YMCA and other private entities and businesses, how they can address similar concerns on their promise. The YMCA has called for police assistance at least 65 times since January 1st regarding assistance in removing individual or individuals from our property. Our response times are not in question and the officers are always professional and polite. However, the city solicitor said at the city council meeting on October 21st that trespassers are arrested for criminal trespassing and/or criminal damaging. And that is not the case. That has not been our experience. And we've heard tonight that, you know, it would be naive to think that we can arrest the problem away. On October 20th, our nighttime staff noticed an individual loitering on YMCA property. We called Ash T'Beulah PD. They arrived timely and removed the individual. About an hour later, staff noticed the same individual back on property again. Ash T'Beulah PD was called again. The individual again was once asked to move along. On October 21st, there was a very aggressive individual who was loitering on our property, who got into a fight with another individual also loitering on property. The aggressive individual was arrested, but only because he had an outstanding warrant in Cleveland, which I believe our officers talked about, the issues that we have with making arrests for trespassing. However, while officers were still on scene, they noticed more individuals sleeping on a mattress on YMCA property and were told to move on and clean up after themselves. October 26th, surveillance cameras picked up three individuals who arrived on bikes with bolt cutters to cut off a lock of a bike of a 13-year-old YMCA member, which then they left with. We have building surveillance throughout our property that has witnessed drug use, nudity, thefts, among other questionable activities after hours. We have cleaned up urine, feces, drugs, drug paraphernalia. We have also have been, have had to clean up spilled and leftover food, clothing, and other trash that is left behind. I believe it was October 11th. We called Ash T'Beulah PD for drug needles that were found. And we were told with drugs in them. And we were told that the police department would not come to remove those. It was not their responsibility. If not the police department, who do we call as a business owner? We have witnessed some individuals who have set fires on property trying to warm up food, which has been spilled and left charred bricks on our building. The fire marshal did stop by. I did speak with him personally. We did talk about camera placement around our property, which we took into consideration and did do all of those recommended locations. Mr. Timonier has mentioned the Baker Act, a tool available in Florida that I am familiar with. I have lived in Florida myself. This legislation provides emergency services with an additional and essential tool for assisting individuals in crisis, a resource that we currently lack here in Ohio. I believe implementing something similar could make a meaningful difference in our community. And I would support and advocate with Mr. Timonier and other local leaders to help this become a law here in Ohio. My perspective on this issue is that we have brought it to our community leaders, seeking their help and direction. However, this is not a challenge that the city, local nonprofits, small businesses, and other churches can share alone. It will require collaborative approach, pooling resources, and expertise from across our community. I'm encouraged to see that more discussions seem to be building since the city's last city council meeting, highlighted in the recent Star Beacon article. It's reassuring to witness agencies coming together to help address this issue head-on. I believe that continued, with continued partnerships, we can make meaningful differences for those struggling in our community while not detracting from our local businesses.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate that.
Mr. President, I would just like to get that date of the call that you mentioned that we said there was, we wouldn't come and get that. As I've mentioned several times, if a situation like that happens, I need to know about it immediately. Everything that comes through our dispatch center is recorded. And I would like to, if we do have that issue and we do hear that on the tape, we will address that. I know we had some concerns from a past incident that was mentioned here on council floor. And when we went back through all the recordings, what was said, what was alleged was said was nowhere near what the outcome of that phone call was, so.
October 11th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, if anything like that ever happens, you know how to get ahold of me in several ways. I want to know immediately so we can pull those recordings.
All right.
Can I have five more minutes? I just want, it's Steve Chase, 2515 Arlington Avenue. Probably should have told you that. First, let me say, Ms. Holman, if you have locations that you're worried about lights, please send them to him and then he will send them on to me. Okay, I promise, I will, I'll leave, I'll go to work early in the morning. I'll look at them and give him my opinion and he can forward it back to you, okay? I have no problem doing that. I stick my nose into other stuff all the time. The Reverend that was up here complaining about the housing issue, I don't disagree with him that housing is difficult in this community. But I can tell you that there are homeless in this community right now that have been put in apartments. They've been put in homes. And they are promptly evicted from those homes because they destroy them. I don't know how providing more housing, providing more money, getting more funding is going to fix that. It's a mental health issue that needs to be fixed. You have a significant number of the homeless here that people that own rental property don't want to rent to them because they destroy them. And you can't blame them for that. I certainly wouldn't blame them for that. So, to me, that's a whole separate mental health issue that the lack of housing is not going to fix. There is a distinct lack of housing, but that's not going to fix it. And throwing money at it is not going to fix it either. I don't have the answer. I wish I did, I'd write a book and be a millionaire. And I'm glad I'm not sitting in your seats because you guys are bearing the brunt of this and dealing with it every day. I deal with the homeless and I can deal with the homeless I deal with the homeless, and I can deal with the homeless, dealing with the angry public, and that other part of it, I sympathize with you. So you have my applaud, my appreciation for what you're trying to do, and I hope you find a good solution.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I just want to add, you have been a great resource, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, I try, I try to do the right thing, I've helped homeless people before, but there are a significant number of homeless that you just can't, you can't help. And while we're talking about the police, I'm going to defend the police here, and I will defend those guys because they have my back. I will tell you right now that the jail here is overcrowded, the county jail is overcrowded, we could build the biggest jail you want, we don't have enough jail space to lock up all the prisoners that were, that need to be locked up. I personally, in the course of being a fire marshal, I've been to the Richfield Correctional Institute to interview an arson suspect before, and when I walked into the place, that is a level two prison, however they categorize them, police chief would know better than I would, that is designed to house low-level offenders. They have murderers in there, because the other prisons are full and there's no place to put them. So to think that we have the room to incarcerate everybody that has a warrant for their arrest, it's laughable, it's not, it's just not feasible unless we want to turn Australia into a penal colony again. So please take what's said about the police with a bit of a grain of salt, I would not want their job, they're overwhelmed, they very well, they'd love to respond to some of these things, but unfortunately, they're pulled in six different directions at the same time. So please, take that with a grain of salt. Thank you, you guys have a nice night.
Mr. President, just one last thing, so as most of you know, with our land bank, we are attempting to build some houses, it's more on the workforce or lower income type housing, but there are, there is a movement to get those constructed. And then the question came up about, is anybody applying for grants? Well, surprisingly enough, highly criticized the $460,000 that I got for the Samaritan House to expand, which they have now opened up, we did get that. Catholic Charities, which surprisingly enough has been criticized for the work that they do, they have a housing coordinator now on staff that they receive grant funding for, plus they receive a lot of other grant funding to do the work that they do. So the answer to that is yes, and it's just a little bit of education and knowing what's going on around you, rather than fighting with them, working with them, to realize what all the organizations are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Timonier. Seeing no one else approaching the podium, we were, our next meeting is November, no, what's today?
It is, sorry.
18?
18, yes.
November 18th, and at 6:30. Thank you for everyone who's coming.
Don't we have an executive session?
Oh, yeah, we have an executive.